I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think I'll leave that. I hope not. Item three, rules of order. We follow Robert's rules of order and any other rules that we vote on during the organizational meeting. One of the items under this that we want to just firm up to make sure that the public is very clear on our budget meetings is just solidifying the dates for our upcoming budget workshops and what we'll be discussing. So just open it up now just so that we can get some clarity and make sure everybody's aware, both from the council and for the public. So do you want to?
Sure. Yeah. So due to some scheduling conflicts, we have made a few small changes. So Thursday, the 27th, we will be having a budget workshop here at 6:00 PM. And the school department will be coming back with their budget. And also, we will be taking a look at local roads. So those two topics will be covered Thursday, the 27th. And then Monday, May 1st, at 6 o'clock here in the council chambers, we'll be having a budget workshop. And that budget workshop right now will consist of the library coming back with their budget proposal, and also a presentation from Green Ellsworth. And beyond that, the future dates have been scheduled, but we don't have specific topics for those meetings.
As far as the voting on the school budget, when we talked about potentially a special meeting Thursday, but that's just going to be a regular budget workshop?
Correct. Yeah. So if the council so chooses tonight, we'll cancel that emergency meeting in order to provide the school department the opportunity to provide the articles, the warrant articles for their budget, so that we, in a timely fashion, so that we can get them forwarded to the newspaper and get them printed in the newspaper, in order to hold a special council meeting on the 8th of May, at which time the council can vote for that budget. And assuming it's passed, then we've set the election for June 29th, which provides us enough time to allot for absentee voting and also get the ballots prepared and everything prepared for the election.
But it will have, we'll have to vote, I mean, it'll have to pass that day in order for that timeline.
Correct. May 8th is, it would have to pass on May 8th.
The do or die day, or else we'll have to...
Right. If it doesn't pass on May 8th, then we'll have to push the election into July, which will create the need for a continuing resolution.
So on May 1st, so I just would like to have a couple of days to go over the budget after the presentation for the school. So would it be possible, not that I want to put anybody off, but could we do the library and then spend the rest of that workshop starting to go over and get a good idea of where we are after the numbers for the school department are provided? Then we can look at the city's budget and see where we are taxation-wise and mill rate-wise. And then we'd have the first and the fourth to go over our departments and talk about changes. And then we would be ready on the 8th. And then maybe if Green Ellsworth could come after we finish the school department piece, and then they could come and do their presentation after that?
Can reach out to them.
Yeah. I just, it's not that they're not important. It's just, they're just giving their opinion on the budget, which won't be, which could be done after the school budget piece is completed. And then we'll complete our portion of the budget, correct? After that, after the 8th? Right?
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah. So they could make their presentation afterward, talking about getting to know where we are, so that we can have a vote on the school department with a little bit of information behind us.
So you want like a city review after the school workshop this Thursday?
So, no.
Can you say what you mean in days, saying the days that you want to do?
Right. Library, okay. So Monday, Monday, the 1st.
Yes.
Is supposed to be library and Green Ellsworth. If we could do the library, because we need to have their numbers, and then start the presentation, start our discussion. And then we would do that on the 1st and the 4th, because we have one on the 4th too, right? Yeah. Then we, then we would be ready and prepared, I think.
So you're saying, take three meetings to talk about the school department, the 27th, the 1st, and the 4th?
Well, the 27th will be, yeah, will be their presentation. And we'll be looking at local roads.
Okay.
So the first would be the library presentation, and then talking about the city budget and with these new numbers, where we are, where the mill rate is, and how much we'll have to be, you know, we'll have to discuss about what we think is going to be acceptable increases. And that's going to take a couple of meetings, and we should do that before the school department.
Yeah. So you're sort of saying what I had been saying a month or so ago, that like, let's take a bird's eye view and look at the big picture, where everything fits together before we make a decision about voting on the school board. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. But not just a bird's eye view, because, I mean, we haven't even, we've only listened to presentations. We have not discussed the city budget yet at all. So, and I know that there are some changes. If we decide, we have to make a decision on the leases for the police department vehicles.
Yeah.
Whether or not we're going to do that with other departments, which affects capital improvements. And so there are a lot of things to discuss.
Yep.
That will give us a better feel for where we are.
Yeah. So you're saying, we'll hear from the school department on Thursday, then we will say, okay, fine, we'll hear about local roads. Then we will come back on the 1st, hear from the library, start conversation about the school and the big picture.
Right.
And then on the 4th, try to finalize our thoughts about the school board, so that when we come back on the 8th, hopefully, we are all, we can pass it.
Yeah, exactly. You know, we can have a good decision and a decision that has, like I said, information, an informative decision is, you know, on the 8th, so.
The school, I'm imagining, will want to be part of that discussion, especially if on the 1st, we're starting to get the sense that the increase is too great, we're going to ask the school to decrease the, they'll want to be part of that to figure out.
Oh, absolutely. But, you know, so that would be, if we look at it Monday, I mean, it's kind of hard to know where our discussions are going to go. But if we, my feeling is, is if we look at it Monday, and we're like, there's just no way that we can do this kind of a mill rate, then we have to, the school and the city, both would have to really make some good decisions, if that even happens. I don't know. You know what I, because we haven't had that bird's eye view that you've been talking about. And we haven't, we haven't seen a budget with all of the changes and what it looks like, and with some of the decisions that we have to make.
They should maybe be prepared to come back on the 4th, then. If they see that we're asking for changes on the 1st, they'll want to put things back into, to learn.
I think you talk with Amy a lot.
I have, yep. The issue is, so if on the 27th, the council is not, is not prepared essentially to pass the school budget, we won't be able to, it's unlikely, well, virtually, it's impossible, we won't have the articles in order to print them in the newspaper. So, which is why I sent you all the link and encourage you all to watch their meeting from last night in preparation for Thursday, so that, my hope is that Thursday, if this, if the council has concerns or additional changes they'd like to see in the school budget, that we can communicate those, so that potentially, worst-case scenario, they could make those changes. We could, we could hold a meeting Monday night with them, for you all to confirm that you're okay with those changes, so that we can get those articles printed in the newspaper on Tuesday. We'll have to communicate with the Ellsworth American to see if they can hold off.
So you're talking about the 8th and the 9th, right?
No, I'm talking about the 1st.
So we're going to advertise the school budget before we vote on it?
If we get confirmation from you all after the workshop on the 27th, that you're...
Their budget articles will be published as an agenda item.
As a public hearing, so that's why it needs to be...
As a public hearing for the meeting.
Yep.
Yes, we, that's, that's what we're voting on.
For the 8th.
For the 8th. And so that, so really, what, what we have is, on the 8th, that's the last date we can vote anyway on the school budget, without it going into a continuing resolution. So really, what's, I think where we're at is, we may find a lot of things that, between the 27th, between Thursday and the 8th, that we say, oh, it's got to change. If that's the case, the vote will be the vote, and we'll vote on whatever's being presented on Thursday. And the changes would come afterwards. So it really is just, I think, just with timing, we're just going to be in a situation where we will hear the, what the school is presenting on Thursday. That's what's going to be published for us to vote on on the 8th. And we don't have enough time for them to go back and forth and adjust it. And so that's what we're going to vote on. And if we're, if collectively we, we don't vote in favor of it, then we know on the 15th, we're going to have to, or June, we could do it in June, but we'll have to do a continuing resolution.
Well, wait a minute. But, I mean, just, this is for the public hearing on the 8th.
Correct.
And we're going to have those articles.
Correct.
But we can, that's what the public is at that moment. But we can make a decision that, we don't have to, it's not a yes or no vote, right?
It would be.
Yeah.
Because if you, well, if you want to change, it would have to go back to the school board to be approved.
Right. But I mean...
And then come back to the council.
I know. But we don't have to change it before it goes at the Ellsworth American. But we can change it and then make a decision, yes or no, on the 8th. But it could be different numbers than what went out there. That's what I'm saying.
No.
Yeah.
We can't change, we can, but we won't be able to, if, what the school, since we don't have the line item vote, we could, on the 8th, say, we need to cut another $200,000. But that's then has to go back to the school board. And at that point, if we send it back on the 8th, there isn't going to be time to have another vote. We're going to have to do a continuing resolution, which we can do.
Yeah.
It's, that's just, that's just what we're going to end up with, is a continuing resolution vote, if, when we, if we send it back.
But I guess what I'm saying is, on the 1st and the 4th, if we find that we've something...
That you wanted to cut $200,000, just say, just for an example.
Yeah, exactly. Just because it's been advertised as the public hearing piece, doesn't mean that we can't talk with the school department on Thursday if they came back and said, look, you know, this is, this is what we need to do, if there's, if there's something different. And we can have the discussion on Thursday, too. But the number that's put into the, for the public hearing, those articles, are not yes or no. We can still, in that meantime, say that there's, there's a, there's a change. And the actual vote that comes on the 8th is what we've talked about with the school department, if we've made any changes.
Right. Well, right.
Right. So it's not a yes or no.
The hope is that conversation will happen on the 27th. But if something changes between the 27th and the 8th, and the school department's able to make the adjustment in their budget, get it passed by the school, by the school board, in time for us to have a meeting on the 8th, then, I mean, I suppose that could happen. But...
So you're saying, you're saying the school board comes back on the 8th with a different package?
Right.
Based on feedback. That's what you're saying, as opposed to the council?
Right.
On that eve, okay. I wasn't tracking.
And is that correct? Like, so it gets posted in the Ellsworth American on the 1st, whatever it is they brought to us on Thursday. Between the 1st and the 4th, they agree to change things that we want them to change, and they bring something on the 8th that is different than what was posted in the Ellsworth American. That's fine, right?
Yes.
And then we post. Okay. I guess, can I just say one thing?
Yeah, of course.
Which is, I guess I just wonder whether, I, I don't love the idea of pushing it till the last second. And I'm not 100% sure why we don't take Thursday, push local road, well, or whatever, maybe don't push local roads, because we actually need a number there, and use that day to have all of this conversation and vote on the 27th. And then keep the 8th as like, before we said the 8th was going to be our, like, what if we vote it down day. But if we can manage to have a conversation on Thursday, that actually, like, okay, we know what the mill rate's going to be, we know what the big picture is, we've talked about it all, this is what they brought to us, and we can pass it, why push it off?
Well, because we haven't given the community opportunity. It hasn't, they haven't seen the budget, they haven't seen the figures, they don't, haven't been alerted to the fact that we're having a public hearing.
But I thought they were alerted that the 2, I knew they weren't alerted about this one. But I thought the 27th has always been our posted day.
There was a, there was a meeting, but we were unable to get the articles from the school department to publish in the newspaper. So there hasn't been any publication of any, of any figures or any, for the public to look at and say, oh, I need to attend that meeting. So that's why it was pushed to the 8th, so that we could get the articles from the school department, published in the newspaper for the meeting on the 8th.
And is that a requirement by the charter, or that's just, we think that's a good thing to do?
I...
All public hearings have to be...
Yeah, all public hearings have to be advertised.
Per the charter.
And that requirement is in the state law for school validation, right?
Well, I know they need to see it before they vote, but they need to see it before we vote? Yeah. Okay. Fine.
Counselor.
The only, the only reason I'm just, I'm not comfortable voting on the school budget, and it's not because by any means am I not supportive of the school, because I absolutely am. But we have, we actually have, we have two budgets, but it's one budget. I mean, it's all combined that goes to the taxpayers. And so if we pass the school budget, and then we start looking at the city budget, and we're way over what we feel is adequate to increase, or even if we want to increase the mill rate, the entire onus of that is going to be on the city. So the only thing, once we pass that and approve it, the only thing that can be cut is the city. So I understand that the education of our children is extremely important, but so are roads, and so is public safety, and sewer and water, and all of those things. And so, but if we, if this comes up to be a four-mill increase, and we say yes to the school department, we get to come back with four mills, which on a $200,000 house is about a $1,000 increase in people's taxes. Have we got to be comfortable with that? And $200,000 homes in Ellsworth, if you're, it is a lot to people. And, you know, for my home, it would be a lot more substantial than that. And it's not about me, but we need to think about, if you're going to make cuts, if you're going to pass the school department with just what they want, without knowing that the, what the mill rate increase is going to be, and that we need to make cuts, you're then saying, hey, city departments, other city departments, you have to cut $2 million out of your budgets.
Which has happened in the past.
It has. And so that means the roads that need to be repaired, it'll come out of local roads, because we don't have enough large things, just like the school department. Our biggest expenses are capital improvements, when local roads, and our, and our people. So we're going to be cutting people and services. And all of it's going to come from us.
Yeah. No, I mean, I understand that. And that's why I want, that's why I want to also see, like, where have we spent, which departments have increased in the past, which departments haven't, so that we can also have kind of a...
Exactly. Which is what I want to do on the 1st and 4th.
But we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul. If we could do everything we wanted to do, we would do everything we wanted to do. So there's going to be some robbing Peter to pay Paul regardless.
Absolutely. That's why I'm saying, if we could just do that on the 1st and 4th.
That might be the problem all along, anyway. Robbing Peter to pay Paul for 20 years, and finally, Peter comes wants his money.
Well, I think that's really part of the question, right? We have made the mill rate pretty flat for a while, and I don't want to raise it four mills, but I don't know that we're going to keep it flat either.
That may be why everybody needs an increase, because it's been flat for so long. And if we had increased it a little bit every year, instead of keeping it flat, maybe it would have been...
Last year, you reduced it, but that's because the valuations went up. So people's taxes still went up.
Oh, I know.
But their house rate went up, so they, that's good for them.
Oh, yay, my house is worth more. I'm not going to sell it, so.
So if we could just, anyways, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make this a long thing, but if we could have to do that, where you just said, of looking at the city budget, at least, the 1st and the 4th, I would appreciate it. I don't know what, if everybody else agrees.
I feel like we're kind of, it's rushing, and I don't, I don't want to rush on this, for the same reasons. I need to see the big picture, what is the effect of the mill rate for both school and city.
All right. So let me recap for us and for the public.
Okay. Thanks.
So this Thursday, the 27th, we'll have a budget workshop. The school will present their budget, and we will also discuss local roads. On May 1st, and all these workshops begin at 6 o'clock, on May 1st, we will, the library will be back, and then we will begin what I'll term a general discussion of looking at everything. Where do we have questions? What more information do we need? Where, where are things at with all the departments, including the school, but everything? May 4th, we'll have a budget workshop, same topic. It'll be looking at the big picture, all departments, raising questions, trying to get answers. We may, you know, end up having to ask for more information, but getting that back. May 8th, we'll call a special meeting, and we'll make that formal in a minute. But we'll have a special meeting on May 8th to specifically vote on the school budget, which, if this, based on our discussions, the school board may present something different that evening, that's from what's been posted. But that will, will have, will still go forward with that meeting, take a vote, and whatever happens will determine the fate going forward. On May 11th, we'll have Green Ellsworth present, and we'll continue our discussions about the budget. We, there's, you know, we may not be, be done at that point, so we'll want to have some space for that. And then on May 15th, that's our regular meeting for, for our May meeting. And we can discuss if we have to have any further budget meetings at that point. We'll, we can add meetings as we see fit.
I'm going to be out of town on May 8th, but I assume, because we now have a remote participation policy, that I could participate.
You can participate, because we have a remote, yep.
Okay.
Will you just shoot me an email, so I can get your Zoom link before it's like that night, so I don't forget?
I will email you.
Just a clarification. So if we do vote yes on the 8th for the school budget, assuming the school is able to bring us a budget that comes from their school board, we'll go forward without needing a continuing resolution?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
As long as the voters approve it.
Voters have to approve it.
Right, but it goes to their phone.
But it will get there in time for voters to...
Right.
And we, and we have to come to a city budget, which you all vote on and approve, so.
Okay.
So it's just one, it's one, one of three hurdles in order to get the budget approved.
Wouldn't disqualify that.
Right. Are we very clear on that? Okay. So we have that. So on the 8th, we will have a special meeting, so we can get, make sure that that gets posted for the school vote. And that will be on the agenda.
Tony, can you send out, like, invites to the calendar, because, because that definitely...
That wasn't good enough?
I, just to make sure I'm where I need to be, just tell me when I need to show up.
For the first, for the discussion of city overall...
Thursday, Monday, Thursday, Monday.
Of overall city budget?
Thursday, Monday.
I don't know if we've in the past had assessors or other experts that can give us help with the general picture of that, i.e., like, when we start discussing one mill, and that equals the average voter in Ellsworth. I think you mentioned $1,000, which may be a four-mill difference. If we could have those numbers, sort of, somebody with a calculator, so.
A real calculator?
Yeah.
Josh did that last year, so.
There, yeah. There's an educational video that, I'll have Larry come, is an educational, it's like a three-minute video that kind of explains how the mill rate works, and how it's calculated, and how assessment affects the mill rate, if you remember seeing it from last year. And I'll make sure that Larry's here, so he can provide some additional information if people have questions.
Yeah, because I think what John is asking is, like, it was nice last year when Josh could say, okay, if we make this decision, what, what does this decision mean for mill rate mean for humans?
Can Larry do that? Or it's usually your finance person.
Keep things out of the action.
I'll have my laptop at that next meeting. I didn't have it last week.
It's fine. Just explain what a mill rate is.
But I'll have that, and I'll make sure Ken has the 10 keys, so that Karen and I can...
Can, is Ann not, is she not available?
She, no, she'll be here, but she, she doesn't have the expertise in that area yet.
So, yeah, I can definitely help. Those spreadsheets should be able to, if she plugs in a number, it should automatically update and kind of give you an idea of what it is.
As long as we have, like, total, like, so if we cut something and say, okay, let's take $20,000 out, we get the total, that's the easiest way to, back rather than piecemealing.
Yeah. We've gone through again and made some changes to city budget, so we've got
Reductions.
Reductions, additional reductions from what was originally presented, so.
And last time we were here, and I think you were gone, you were telling us that on our, that one page, that first intro page, it said that last year's mill rate was 17.17, but it actually wasn't?
It's actually 15.7, so I've got some adjustments to make on that this week. But I will have a new printed copy for you at Thursday night, just as a preview, but then, depending on school members, that may have to be readjusted. But I'll redo that for Thursday.
Because that, that must have been last year's projected mill rate. Because, like, what we're projecting now as a mill rate is not necessarily what the mill rate's going to land on. It's, it's a ballpark figure based on what we're getting, what Larry's providing for a kind of estimated evaluation, what the school, you know, what the school budget comes in at, what the city budget comes in at. And there's, there's other, you know, revenues that come into play. The school department, last year, they received additional funding from the state, so that, so, and that came in after the budget was passed. So then that impacted the, the overall mill rate. So there's, again, that mill rate is projected, and that's, that's why that number ended up being lower last year than what we projected, because we didn't know a lot of those pieces. And also, I also would like to just kind of put out there that that mill, that 15-mill rate that we had last year was really artificially low. And when the assessment is completed and commitment is done, the assessor has the ability to set the mill rate, and there's a range. And when the mill rate was set, he set it at the very lowest, as opposed to setting middle or the highest. So you have a range of mill rates. It's not, you're locked in at one particular spot.
Yes. The budget doesn't totally 100% define the mill rate, is that what you're saying?
Correct. It's tax commitment, that doesn't matter.
And, and Larry locked us in at the absolute lowest, which...
It's like a $4,000 overlay, so you're really like...
Which is good, it's good, but at the same time, again, now, when you're trying to eke back up, and last year, we, you know, we had some, we were able to keep the budget a little bit lower, because we had some COVID, you know, unspent COVID money that we were able to, you know, roll over into budgets and so forth. So that 15-mill rate's unfortunately, you know, not realistic for us to be able to maintain long-term.
I was going to ask, does it generally, the actual mill rate generally come in lower than our projected? Is that typical, or no, it can be up or down?
It's usually pretty close.
So it's, last year was weird, is what you're saying? A little bit weird?
A couple of years ago, it was almost 19, right?
So, well...
Again, the mill rate isn't, it isn't because we had cuts. It's because the valuation, all the homes, because of the value, the market value of homes has increased. He increased a lot of homes, and I'm sure waterfront properties and things. So just because the mill rate lowered by three mills, people's taxes still went up.
But they went up very minimal, because we, the, if you look at the budget increase, it was very, it was very low. It was literally, it was like...
Depends on how much your valuation went up.
Three or 4%. I mean, it was, it was a very minimal change in budget year over year. So when the mil, so when the assessed value was increased fairly significantly, to your point, but to my, the point I'm making is, if we hadn't maintained a small increase in budget, and he had a significant evaluation, the individual tax rate would have gone, would have been a much more significant increase. But we were able to keep the increase, the budget increase low, and the assessed value went up significantly. So there was increase in taxes, in your tax rate, but it was much lower than it would have been if our budget had been also up significantly.
Yeah, buffered it a little bit.
Counselor O'Halloran?
Maybe that we're a little off the subject, but it's in line with what everyone's talking about here. I called City Hall as a citizen and asked for 10... I called City Hall as a citizen and asked for ten years of my tax bill on my house. So we can talk about mill rates, we can talk about evaluations, or we could talk about the real cost. Because the mill rate, the evaluations is a moving target, and the real cost is over here. And just to give you a, an example, they gave me from thirteen to twenty-three, okay? And my taxes in thirteen was thirty-one, forty-four, twenty. In twenty-three is thirty-six, thirty-three, seventy-seven. So that's approximately five hundred dollars, it's fifteen and a half percent over ten years, that's about fifty dollars a year that has gone up over ten years. So, whether we talk about mill rates, evaluations, um, my house has gone up five hundred bucks in ten years. That's not bad.
Did you say fifteen percent?
Fifteen and a half percent over ten years.
Over ten years.
And, and I like to look at the, the number, I don't care what the evaluation is, what the mill rate is, but fifteen and a half percent over ten years, or about fifty dollars a year, average. So, somebody somewhere has done some real good, um, work to keep that cost that reasonable, um, is where I'm going.
So I'll just, um, we should bring all of, this, this part of the discussion forward as well, um, be, just so that the public is aware of that, because it's, it's good information, and when, we, we did kind of drift a little bit, and we don't want to get in trouble. So, we will repeat all of this as we go through our, our budget workshop, um, and certainly, as we, when we get to the point of voting on the, the budget, have that education to the public and be aware of it as well, so, um, we, we will definitely do that. And we're inching our way to your, to the agenda item.
I know.
We'll get there. Any, anything else on the, the, the rules? Got to make things fit, so. All right, unfinished business, consent agenda, consent agenda, all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion on the Items unless the council members request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four, council order number one zero four two five zero zero, request of the city manager to hold a special municipal school budget validation referendum election on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, for the purpose of validating the school budget. Item five, council order number zero four two five zero one, request of the city clerk for appointment of wardens and ward clerks for the four voting districts within the city of Ellsworth for the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, City of Ellsworth School Budget Validation Election. And item six, council order number zero four two five zero two, request of the city clerk for approval on setting the public places, opening time at eight AM for the June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, City of Ellsworth School Budget Validation Election. I would like to rem- um, address item four separately, if we could, um, so let's, anyone, want to remove any others?
No, item six, isn't it going to be June twenty-ninth, on six and four, and all of them?
If you remove item four separately and change it there, it'll affect the other two by default.
So let's start with item four, then, um, in discussion, so. Counselor.
So councilors, due to the school budget needing a few extra days, I would request that item four be modified to call June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three as the school budget validation vote and referendum. And then if you were to make that change, that would affect items five and six, to change those two dates to the June twenty-ninth date also.
Any discussion?
Move to hold a special municipal school budget validation referendum election on June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, for a purpose of validating the school budget.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. So, items five and six, the date will change to June twenty-ninth automatically, um, as a result of that, so unless somebody wants to remove those items, we'll take those up as a consent vote together. Is there a motion to approve?
No, we're closed. Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. New business, public hearing in action on the issuance of a business license. Governor's Restaurant and Bakery, two fifty-three High Street, for a new city class C Vicarland liquor, and new state restaurant class one, two, three, and four liquor license, and
Just to change ownership, everything's in order.
So this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open, welcome any comment of the public. Anyone?
Hi, folks, uh, my name is Jason Clay, I'm a resident of Brewer, where coincidentally, the mill rate is almost twenty-two, so keep up the good work, uh, what you're doing. I'm currently the Director of Operations for Governor's Restaurant, I've been with the company for more than seventeen years in total. And on May twenty-second, I'll be purchasing the company from the Wadley family. I'm excited to carry on this iconic main brand, um, we're well, uh, set up for our future, um, and we're excited to continue to be part of the Ellsworth community. And I plan to operate the business in the same manner it's been operated for sixty-four years in the state, so again, I look forward to being part of this community, operating in a safe, responsible manner, and I'm more than willing to answer any questions about the ownership change, but, uh, it's pretty basic.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great.
No questions? Seeing no other comments from the public, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the license for Governor's Restaurant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. And item eight, adjournment. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn at six forty.
That will never happen again.
All of us is going to vote.
All those in favor? Yes, we are adjourned.